The following program is sponsored by The Greek, Ely's Radio Shack Dealer 570 Altman in Downtown Ely, and brought to you as a public service by Georgetown Media in Ely, Nevada. White Pine County Commission Meeting, September 9th, 2020.
Good morning and welcome to the Wednesday, September 9th, regular scheduled meeting of the White Pine County Commission. Would you all please stand and join us in the ledge? Ian, why don't you give us your name?
President of the United States of America. The two Republican Republicans who stand for one nation, our individual liberty and justice for all.
Okay. As per our regular scheduled meeting, we'll take the first moment for prayer meditation, Okay. We'll open the county commission meeting with the first item, that's a public comment. Is there any public comment on the phone this meeting? Seeing none, is there any public comment from the audience?
Yes.
Please come forward, state your name.
My name's Lynette Wyler, I'm from McGill. My public comments today would be about the slant ditch in McGill, and I know it's on the agenda, and also, the money's allocated for the McGill ballpark. I think that we're jumping the gun here, and I think that because it's so late in the season, and we don't have a plan to get ahead of the ballpark, we're running behind it, trying to make it work, there's so many things that aren't done. I was told the ballpark would be finished by mid-November, there hasn't been anybody working on the ballpark for weeks, and so, one of my biggest concerns with the ballpark is I had gone back and read completely over the grant, and nowhere in that grant does it say, "We're only going to fix one field at baseball garden." It says McGill ballpark. And so, I have some very strong feelings about us allocating eighteen thousand more dollars to buy a four-wheeler and a dragger, and, I mean, do we have bases bought, do we have chalk line bought? If they came to us tomorrow and said, "Hey, November 27th, after the ballpark's all finished and ready, could we, we as a town, be able to put on a ballgame?" No, that isn't going to happen. So, those are my biggest concerns, is, and also, the ballpark, meaning the whole ballpark, nothing has been done, not one, nothing's been touched on the outside of the ballpark. And, so, I feel like that we, I'd like to see some, some movement on what we're really doing with it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment in the audience? Someone please come forward, state your name.
Yes, good morning. My name is Christopher Milo, and this might be a little solution to that as well. For one, I proposed this to Mayor Goodman at a city council meeting, that my colleagues and I feel that all non-violent inmates with the exclusion of pedophiles and murderers should be released immediately, under the agreement that they're being released to help beautify the city. That could be an assistance. Why aren't there water wheels and water condensation boxes, fruit trees and gardens in all the parks? Another thing is, we're wasting a lot of natural resources in fighting fires. Now, we've known for a long time that sound, low bass tones emitted in certain intervals will drown out a campfire. So, maybe we should think about being an example and getting maybe tarp and getting a hold of bows, so it's a thin speaker flown by drums over the affected area, therefore putting out fires. Water is extremely important, I mean, we have all the resources around us, there's no reason that any of this should not be being done, it's well within the parameters. Purgas over walkways, naturally heated areas, I mean, yes, it will put, I'm not after the stores and corporations, although that will be a repercussion, because I do understand that most of the, they won't be able to sell any fruits and vegetables anymore, and that's the most expensive thing, and we all know that's the healthiest thing for all of us. Now, we as a community, I feel that we should bond together stronger, because Ely, Nevada, the most rural place in the United States, in the lower forty-eight, excuse me, is going to be an example. So, this could turn into a greedy society, like in bigger cities, or we can shape it that we're making a difference, because we're working together. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience for a public comment? Please come forward, state your name.
Joanna Stratton. This question could probably maybe be answered to me by Sheriff Penroy, but I want to know if there is some kind of an ordinance to make people responsible for their properties. About eighty percent of McGill looks like a weed-infested ghetto, and a lot of people live in these places, and they just let it go to weed, and it looks horrible. So, is there some kind of an ordinance that makes these people responsible for their properties? I mean, even in Ely, I see a lot of garbage, and McGill is bad, so, that's, I need to know who makes these people responsible to get off their lazy butts and get something done. Take care of your yards. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Question about that.
This is just public comment.
Right, right, I have a question about what she had said.
Well, I can't, I can't let you do that, you had your three minutes, we did three minutes of public comment time.
Okay.
I'm not trying to be rude, it's just trying to follow protocol.
No, no, I get it. For sure.
Now, we're still in public comment, anyone else with public comment? Seeing none, George, please come forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, on your agenda, I want you to consider the approval of a lease for hangar number two. The lease should be repaid at the end of a five-year term, not extended with an option of another five years. Economics change, and there may be a chance of greater revenue. Under lease agreement regarding consideration for one, it states the county agrees to pay for all utilities, gas, electrical, water, and sewer, including non-필. The gas and electrical alone, you drew out the two-hundred-and-forty-one dollars that you're getting in rent in less than a month, you need to exclude utilities. We made up this lease anyway, you've got to look at the dollar amount that you're getting, and what may be, may be putting out. This is a terrible item, that needs to go. Mr. Chairman, on your agenda item four, you consider a meeting of lease agreement between the city of Ely and White Pine County and the White Pine Ground Association, that is a meeting which should be with the city only. The city has given up a revenue source which it desperately needs. The ground association should just oversee proper ground maintenance. Somebody can't do their job, you can't just keep giving away the city function, losing revenue, and hoping for change. Somebody needs to step up, that includes cutting wheat, as previous speaker talked about, the ordinances are there. Mr. Chairman, on your agenda item one, see you here to consider the approval of a security agreement with Mount Williams for loan with no interest, yet there's a credit fee charge for a ten-year period for approximately thirty-one thousand. There's no interest, why is there that, a credit charge, or whatever they call it? Your schedule's in the package material. Mr. Chairman, on your agenda items two, G1 and 2, you consider possible road maintenance, excuse me, road maintenance agreement with West Noah and Western Gold, all maintenance repairs should be done by the contract, by a contract, hired by West Noah and Western Gold. The county should not be moving against private sector. Interair does not allow the county to assist private, any tax payer's dollars. Their maintenance needs to be done, upgrades, they need to do it because they cause the damage. Mr. Chairman, I asked in the previous meeting where Aaron H. Partick is, I'd like to receive an answer. Again, if it's over by the Love's Truck Stop, you need to keep taking prime commercial property off the tax rolls. You did not build a school near a truck stop, yet you've done that, now you're going to compound a possible problem. You've got to look at that. Mr. Chairman, you need to solicit a newspaper to fair and balanced, it doesn't discriminate against those who have opinions. I paid for an ad in April, I'm still waiting. If they take money under false pretenses, you need to pull their license. They don't need to be doing business in the city of Ely. Mr. Chairman, state health mandates that must be worn along special distancing when out in public or in public meetings. Again, Commissioner Boas has attended numerous meetings, ten, twelve, and including the day, does not wear a mask. As a public official who took an oath to enforce and abide by all laws, he needs to comply or resign. The rest of the county commission has the same obligation, you need to set him straight, or you need to resign. Back in March, I got a letter, or directive from the governor, delivered by a peace officer, sheriff's office, that I had to close my business for a period of time, I did that, I didn't like it, but I did it. Now we have a public official who refuses to wear a mask in a public meeting? You have responsibility as well as he does, and he needs to step up to the plate.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there any other public comment in the, in the building? I'll ask one more time, is there any on the phone? Anybody on the phone with public comment? Hearing none, and seeing none?
One more.
We can't, you, you've had your three minutes, and that's, that's it for the public comment. So, if you have a comment, again, at the end of the meeting, you can, you can address it then.
Okay.
And I'm not trying to be rude, that's just, that's standard operating.
I understand.
All right. So, hearing none or public comment, we're going to open up the nine o'clock fire commission meeting, and the first item in the fire commission meeting on fire is public comment again, and you can address public comment at this time on the fire commission. Anything?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I'm asking past, and I'm asking again, if your fire chief has had a chance to inspect the ingressing dress on Avenue D accessing Highway ninety-three near the new Holiday Inn, the road is much too narrow to allow emergency vehicles.
George, you've, excuse me, but you've tried this stuff hundreds of times. Go to the state highway, go to the state highway, get your, meet with the fire chief, and address your complaints there, and bring it back and respond.
How many times have you been to these meetings?
I'm sorry, but that, number one, that's in the city, number two, that's it.
I'm asking for an answer, either he did or he didn't.
Hey, we're not going to discuss it right here, you talk to the state highway and talk to the state.
Simple answer.
Simple answer is that.
Did he look at that, yes or no?
End of story, thank you very much, bring it up.
You have an obligation to give me an answer, Mr. Chairman.
The simple answer is that ingress egress to state highways is all dictated by NDOT, we have no control.
And the other part is, that's within the city limits. No more argument about it, that's it, thank you very much.
I propose that all parties should get together, because that's the only way manipulation continues to happen, is when all parties aren't there.
Again, this isn't a discussion period, this is public comment, George made his comment, we responded, that's that. This is public comment, you want an item that you want discussed, it needs to be put on the agenda for each meeting that we go to, and then you're allotted that amount of time, so you go to the clerk's office prior to the meeting, ten days before each meeting, get it on the agenda, and we can discuss it during the agenda item, not during public comment.
There's a clerk's office over there, right?
Yes, yes, it is.
To my recollection, I was eighty-six from the courthouse, so I'm not even allowed in that building.
I don't have any control over that, but that's where you take.
But is that just the courthouse that I was eighty-six?
I've got your email, Chris, I'll talk to you about being on the agenda, okay?
Okay.
All right, I'm the clerk.
So, we're not, we're in, we're in a fire commission meeting, and we're in public comment on the fire commission, and again, we're not trying to be rude, we're just strictly trying to adhere by policy. So, is there any other public comment on the phone? And for the fire district, any more in the building on the fire district? If not, we're going to proceed. Item one in the fire district is discussion update on the district, fire district progress, Brett Horn, fire chief. And also, we have with us the fire chief of the city meeting, Patrick Stewart.
Thank you. So, we really haven't had a lot going on this month, been a few fires, I guess. Fired Healy, we had county folks helping on, fired on McGill Highway, everybody worked together, good on that. Working with Travis on doing fire inspections for the county, we're going to hopefully get coordinated with all the city feds staff and myself to get up to speed on fire inspections, so we can get that process to go on quicker. I think that's about it.
Yeah, just from our end, we've been, we had our guys scheduled training every Thursday night at six o'clock, we've had great turnout, we had fourteen, fifteen people from McGill showed up, people from Lackawanna have been showing up. We're just rolling out a program now, we've got all set up with Zoom, so we can start doing our EMS CEUs for the folks from Lund and Baker, and everybody can participate on the EMS courses that we're doing, usually twice a month, and those are their continuing education credits if they need to recertify them. So, by being set up on that Zoom account, those folks in L.A. and areas will be able to participate without having to travel anywhere, so, that's kind of what we're at on that.
Several one EMPs participated on the last one.
Yeah.
Any questions, if anyone else has a question, come there and say it. Thank you very much.
To comment?
Go ahead.
This, this collaboration between you two is something we dreamed about for a long time, and it is, I have really appreciated it, to see what you've accomplished, and what you continue to accomplish, and I just want to let you know how much I appreciate it.
Here, here.
Hundred percent, thank you.
Okay. Item two is discussion for possible action, approval of monthly financial reports for August 2020, Elizabeth.
Thank you, and the backup is in your packet, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to. I'm going to, I'm going to ask for your approval.
Anyone got anything on this? If not, I'll vote for a motion to approve.
Salute.
Motion by Ian.
Second.
Second by Lori. Any further comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none, passionate, unanimous. Item three, discussion for possible action, the approval of budget transfers within and between functions or programs within funds that do not increase the total appropriation of the fund, or adjust for approved grants slash agency fund, Elizabeth.
Thank you, and in your backup is the detail to that, and these are your final adjustments for fiscal year 2020, there are none to report for fiscal year 2021, so basically, you're just balancing out end of year. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Anyone got anything for a list with on that? Anyone? Hearing none, I'll vote for a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Lori.
Second.
Second by Shane. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none, passionate, unanimous. Item four, discussion only, the possibility of entering into an intermodal agreement or other like agreement with the state fire marshal to authorize properly trained local officials to conduct fire inspections. Is this you, Travis?
Probably more Brian, I think Brian takes the lead, I think.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, so this is us, we, I was asked to look into this, the state fire marshal has recently been appointed, his office has been really responsive, we've actually had a couple of phone calls between them, kind of laying out what we can do to basically effectuate our own inspections, and there's kind of two tiers, there's sort of, I believe what these gentlemen were talking about is, like, the annual inspections of certain buildings, but I think we're also interested in doing like plan reviews of new, new buildings, just to facilitate that, hopefully move that along a little more quickly. That requires a high level of expertise, but they actually did lay out to us how we'd be able to do that, which is basically the contract with the company, or, you know, have a list of a couple companies that could actually do those high-end plan inspections, and just pass the cost on to whoever the business owner is. So, you have sort of a choice, I think is how they're putting it, you either can wait for the state fire marshal, and I don't want to sort of denigrate that office, I'm not sure what their timeline's looking like, but I think that the timing has been a concern in the past, or, under the ino- local that we're proposing, you can go ahead and have one of the three companies that are approved by the state fire marshal's office to do those inspections on the county's behalf, and maybe the city wants to do a similar agreement to move things along more quickly. So, the communication between us and the state has actually been really great, they, they really have a good sense of how to do these agreements, and so I think in the future, Travis will probably be getting an item on, asking for some funds to get at least breadth trained in being able to do this, we're not sure how much that was, the gentleman we spoke with didn't know the cost, the state actually puts on that sort of lower-level training in-house, we were kind of hoping that maybe if we had enough folks, they'd be able to come out here, I'm not sure if there's any feedback, if you guys had any feedback on that.
That's just kind of what we was trying to do, we did in the past, all of our people that we had have since retired and left, but we had them come out here and put on the class, basically for doing the fire life safety inspections, going around the businesses and making sure that, you know, their main hazards keep the public safe, like Brian said, once you get into that other portion of the plans review, it's a very technical, expertise-filled.
It's like its own profession, I actually called them a couple weeks ago, and they were kind of like politely laughing at me, because I was telling, you know, we kind of had this big idea about what we're going to be doing, and oh, yeah, we're first, he's going to get up to speed on that, and they're like, uh.
Yeah, it's, it's way out of our reach, probably, I mean, it's, but, but the other portion of what we really need to focus on is the, the fire life safety inspections, to go around and, and check on the daily hazards in businesses, and make sure they're keeping stuff compliant, keep the public safe.
When I spoke with Dennis Pinkerton over at the state, he was hoping to be able to set it up so we could do most of it online.
Oh, wow.
So, we didn't have to go over there for the two-week class, so, though.
Is there, do you have an idea on cost yet?
He was still figuring out how to do it, so.
They've had a vacancy in that office for a while, so, the, the good news is it seems like they're going to be really responsive, and they've been calling me right back, so, I'm hopeful.
You got anything to add tonight?
No, I think that sums it up, but, yeah, as you're all aware, just trying to get some of these things that are sped up and, and, and under some more local control, I think going with this kind of two-tier approach is just perfect, and hope we can get there, so.
Excellent. Okay. Anyone else got any discussion on this, pick your item, we'll move right on, that was discussion only, so we'll move right on to item five, in the fire district, that is discussion for possible action, the approval of the minutes from the fire commission meeting of August the 12th, 2020. Anybody got any additions, corrections, or subtractions? If not?
Motion to approve, I have a spell.
Motion by, motion by Lori.
Second.
Second by Travis. Any further discussion? Three men, all, passionate, unanimous. Okay, the last item we have in the fire district.
We didn't vote for it.
We didn't?
No.
Okay, so let's have a vote, I'll, Lori made the motion, Travis made the second, we call it.
Aye.
All opposed.
Okay, now we can, can I just talk about that? So, we're moving on, next item in the fire commission meeting is public comment again. Is there any more public comment on the fire commission before we move on? Anything on the phone? Hearing none, seeing none within the building, we'll move on, we will close the fire commission and reopen the county commission meeting, and we are just a little ahead of time, so let's see if we can find something that's forwarded on. So, you want to do your own, Richard? Yeah, well, I think, well, we can do that, let's, let's go to page four, it's item A1, under Richard Howe, myself, and item A is discussion for possible action, the approval to appoint Travis Grodon as commission liaison to the energy in White Pine County, and I'll just give a brief update on that, we are right on the cusp of having a very large project, energy corridor right here in White Pine County, it's very, very good, we're going to have a presentation by Gridflex here a little bit later, but with Travis's background, and he and I have been working on this, and, and the ins and outs, and knowing the people, he's been to a couple meetings, we had a big, large meeting here last Tuesday, I felt that he would be the best man to step up and be our liaison for all the energy projects, because he has a background in solar, and he's been involved in this, so, I, I just felt that he is the best person for this job, and so, on this agenda item, I'm asking the commission to approve to appoint Travis as our energy liaison.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Ian.
Second.
Second by Shane. Any further discussion? I had a request, I think that I can do this, to, someone's asked to be the alternate, can I do that right now?
No, not right now.
Wouldn't they have to be on another agenda?
Okay, so, the motion was made by Ian, and it was seconded by Shane, to appoint Travis Grodon as our liaison to energy.
Brian, do I have to say anything to you? I vote.
Well, you can vote for yourself.
Okay.
Hearing none, all, all ask for the vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none, passionate, unanimous. Travis, thank you very much. We'll go to the second item, I think, can we get this done quickly?
Yeah.
Page four, item two, is under Travis Grodon, vice chairman, is discussion possible action to reclaim county usage of limited library space due to COVID spacing slash occupancy and other concerns related to the office placement of the county facilities due to the new courthouse facility, to include approval of a note to the University of Nevada Reno, providing thirty days' notice to vacate its use of the county library space, and inviting them to explore several private lease vacancies within White Pine County for its purposes. Okay?
Yeah, it was requested that he's office put this on the agenda, pretty self-explanatory, is there anything to add, Brian?
There is nothing to add.
Okay, I'm going to brood.
I'll second.
Motion by Travis, second by Lori, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none, passionate, unanimous. Okay, it's four minutes, let's go to the.
Untimed.
Pardon?
Untimed items, consent agenda.
Yeah, I'm just going to go to the consent agenda right now. Page five, the consent agenda, any, for the consent agenda, if not, I'll ask for a motion to approve a consent agenda.
Motion to approve is presented.
Okay, motion by Shane, second by Ian, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none, untimed items, we can go down. B, on page five, we won't do A, because we'll wait for the mayor, we'll do B, discussion for possible action, the approval of a lease agreement between White Pine County and Michael Costa for hangar number two effective October 1st, 2020, for five years at a rate of two-hundred-and-forty-one dollars a month, with a leasing option for an additional five years at a CPI-adjusted rate. We awarded this last meeting, so.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Ian.
Second.
Second by Lori, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none, passionate, unanimous. Item C, discussion for possible action, approval to prepare and send a letter of support for snip of around eighteen grant proposals by the BLM for a large recreational project north of Ely. John Miller, BLM, is John Miller here?
He might be on Zoom.
Mr. Miller, are you on the phone?
But he did provide a backup letter, or a letter in backup, that I have to.
So, let's.
A letter for the request where the area is, and then provided a template of a letter that we could utilize from the commission in support of this. Yeah.
I'll read the letter real quick, I'll just read it real quick. Nicole, I'm John Miller, the recreational planner here at the BLM office, we are putting in for a snip of around eighteen grant proposal for a large recreational project that just north of Ely. The project includes upgrading the Garnet Hill and Eden Creek recreation areas, Garnet Hill will have an engineered road from the route junction that will allow all vehicles to safe access, both recreation areas will have new camping facilities and large parking areas, there will be, there will also be a system of constructed and exciting motorized and non-motorized trail system that will be connected to each area and to, and to the city of Ely. If the proposal is approved, the BLM would invite the county commission to be involved in the planning process at the level the county would like to participate in. This is a great opportunity to improve our recreational assets in our community, we'd like to include a letter of support in White Pine County Commission. We'd like to include a letter of support in White Pine County Commission with our grant proposal. Any questions, contact John Miller out of Recreation. So, that, I guess this is just more of us asking us to sign on.